I know.
I do know. Oh, I had four here, okay. Okay, well, we put five down on the screen, I think. All right, thank you, Mark.
I'll remember your name this time, Chris.
Would the meeting come to water, please? Already, we're behind. I promised we would start this promptly at seven o'clock. And we still have quite a few people waiting to check in. But we're going to begin now because I've done the best I can to prolong it. I've got a couple of announcements to make before we get into Article One. First off, I would appreciate it if everybody would turn off their cell phones, if you haven't done that already. Not that we will need them, but if we happen to have to exit this building for a fire or any emergency, you can exit it through the back or you can exit it through these two side entrance ways. We will not need to do this, but I thought just giving the information would be helpful. I would like to thank several people because tonight's town meeting took a little bit of extra effort from a lot of people. And I will not name them all, but I would like to particularly thank the town clerk Eva Taylor and her office. I would also inform you that Eva is busy doing real work tonight here. And the job of the town clerk, which is a very important job, is being filled by Mary D. Eldoretti tonight, who's the assistant town clerk. And so she will be helping us up here tonight. For those of you who say we can't have a meeting without the town clerk, you are right, so we do have a town clerk here to fulfill those functions. We have a moderator in the other room, where the other room being the place we normally have town meeting in case it's needed. And he is Ed Ellis, who's a former town clerk himself for many years. And you are all familiar with that, I think. And I can see the other room, and it's looking very vacant right now because we still have plenty of seats here. It was an interesting town meeting to plan for because we had no idea how many of you would show up. And it does appear that we're getting a slightly better audience than we normally do for special town meetings in October, as far as I can tell. Better by an order of magnitude, perhaps. So we do appreciate your all being here. I would like to ask you a question that I hope you will answer. How many of you are at a town meeting for the first or second time? Haven't been to too many town meetings. That is terrific. Great, thank you. I hope you will enjoy the process. But remember, I'm a sadistic person. And I hope you will come back to many more town meetings. This is absolutely the truest form of democracy on the face of this earth. And we are fortunate, I think, to be able to participate in it where you can come and speak and change people's minds and vote. I think it's a terrific process. I do have several other things to point out to you. I will, we're going to do some things differently at this meeting than we normally do, but I'll explain them as we go along. I've always found that feeding people too much information up front is disastrous. But when time comes that you need the information, I will do my very best to provide it to you in a timely fashion. I know that many of you were handed the League of Women Voters surveys when you come in. I'm very grateful to the League for doing this survey. It's part of a broader study that they're doing on town meeting. And I think the study will be available in late fall. And I'm looking forward to it, to seeing what they're suggesting for town meeting on an ongoing basis. It should be quite helpful to us. And I will take all suggestions and try to incorporate them if I think they're going to make town meeting better. Some of them that asked me to resign, however, I am putting aside. You know there's another thing going on tonight, right? Some of you are aware of this. There is no chance that this meeting is going to be over by nine o'clock. So forget it. Some of you are probably watching this meeting at home. And I hope you're enjoying it. But there are still plenty of seats here or in the other room. And I would invite you to come down. Those who wait too late to come, and this is a serious thing, those who wait too late to come may not be able to vote. So you have to be here as the voting process starts. I was going to read off a group of rules about town meeting, but I think they're superfluous. I would point this out now, and I'll point it out again, that when we come, when it comes time for citizens debate on the pro and con of the larger issue at stake tonight, we will use pro and con microphones for all citizen argument. And one and three, microphones one and three will be the pro microphones and two and four will be the con microphones. But that's not going to take place for a while yet. I would like to start the meeting by asking our superintendent of schools, Bill Ryan, to introduce some very new key staff that he has hired, has been hired, three new principals, I believe. And Bill, if you would do that, I would be most appreciative. Microphone two?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
No, microphone two, please?
Two.
Two.
All right, I think we're okay. Again, thank you, Mr. Moderator. As many of you know, we have three new school principals. And I'd like you to join me in welcoming them to our school community. So if the three of you would all stand, please. First, I'd like to introduce Lynn Newman. She's our new principal at the Paul P. Gates Elementary School. Lynn received her BA in elementary education from the University of Massachusetts and her M.D. in educational leadership and management from Pittsburgh State College. Lynn came to us from the Fred W. Miller Elementary School in Holliston, Mass., where she served as the assistant principal. Welcome, Lynn. Next, it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Ed Kaufman, who is the new principal at the Marion Elementary School. Ed has been a teacher at Marion since 1995. He received his BA in education from the University of Michigan and his master's in counseling from the University of Vermont. Ed has also served as a counselor at the Bureau of Study Council at Harvard University. And he's been a senior instructor at Cambridge College. Welcome, Ed. And our third new principal is Dr. Alexandra Callen, who has taken over the reins of the Acton-Boxborough Regional High School. Dr. Callen received her BA and MAT from Brown University, where I think our town moderator also went, and her doctorate in education from Harvard University. Alix came to us from Needham High School, where she was serving as the assistant high school principal. She lives in Concord, but she assures me that she'll be cheering for the Acton-Boxborough football team tomorrow evening when we play Concord, Carlisle at Larry Field. Welcome, Alix. We are very excited to have all three of you join the A.B. School community. Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you, Bill. You know, I'm delighted that you said that I went to Brown. I also went to Needham High School, so we have even more in common. But I went there so long ago that it was a different school then. I hope the new principals will have a long and satisfying career here in Acton, and they will enjoy themselves and make a great contribution to the town. So thank you again, Bill. I think it is time now to move on to Article One. And let me tell you how this will work. We will start off by my reading the article, the motion under the article. It is the motion that you vote on, not the article, but the motion in this case fully represents the article. It will be seconded. We will then have a series of presentations, five in total, on the article. That will take somewhat under an hour. We will then open it up for questions on this article. And then we will move to pro and con argument. After that, we will vote. However, before I put the article into play, I think Mr. Calandrella has a motion pertinent to the voting. Mr. Calandrella?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to take the vote on the main motion under Article One or the main motion as it may be amended by secret ballot.
It's moved and seconded, that we use a secret ballot for the motion under Article One and any amendments that are passed there, too.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to know how we are going to do the secret ballot and how long it will take, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me do this first, if I may. May I hear a second to this motion? It's been moved and seconded. And you've asked how we're going to take the secret ballot. I suppose you won't accept just carefully as the answer. Is that right? What we will do is we will have tellers escorting this audience and any that is in the other room, section by section, starting, I believe, with the bleachers and winding up with the four sections on the floor. We will have you one by one file down the outside aisle, across the center aisle, and toward me in two columns, one from this side of the room and one from this side of the room. We will have four ballot boxes on the tables in the front. About the time you are thirty-one and a half feet from the ballot box, you will be handed a ballot. And the ballot is an easy one. It will have a yes and a no on it. You will then tear the ballot in half. Half you will put into the ballot box, either ballot box. The other half you will discard in a barrel that will be over there. Now, it's very important that you don't put your vote in the barrel and the non-vote in the ballot box. It's also important that you don't put the wrong thing in the ballot box and then said, oh, I'm just going to reach in and change it. It is also equally important that you understand, if I may use the sexist remark, it's one man, one vote here. You can't, oh, one person, one vote. You cannot take information from your husband, who says he's going home to watch the debate, and says, here's how I want you to vote, honey, and then vote for the both of you. You can't do that. You only can vote one time. Now, you can go home and tell your wife that you voted for her, if you want, or your husband, as the case may be. But it's only one person, one vote. After all the votes are cast, we will move on prior to counting to Article Two while we're counting the ballots for Article One. We will split the ballots into two groups. Yeses and nos. And then we'll count the nos. We'll put them in groups of fifty, staple them together so that, and this will be watched by people from both sides. And we'll do it right here in front of you so that you know that it's being done fairly and honestly. We will probably even show you that the ballot boxes are empty if we can when we start. Coming from Chicago, as I did before I came here, people always ask me about this. After we get the full count, we will announce it. I expect the full count will not come in until Article Two is finished. How long will this take? We've tried to calculate this, and we've been virtually unsuccessful at it. But I would bet if we have over two thousand here, which it appears that we will have, it will take more than an hour to vote each time we take a secret ballot. And there's only one scheduled. So I would say it would take an hour, perhaps a little bit longer. It depends on how quickly we can get you to the voting place. And if I stop talking, it will be earlier than it is if I go on any further. All right, it's been moved and seconded. This is a debatable amendment. Is there any comment from anybody? See, you know, I'm sorry. You have to come down to the microphone. You cannot speak from the, I apologize that it's going to be difficult for some people to get to microphones. Also, I noticed that these bleachers, by the way, are made for young people, aren't they?
Like me, right?
Well, yeah, exactly. I was thinking of you when I made that comment. Yes, sir?
I was just thinking--
Would you announce who you are? Would everybody announce who they are and what street they come from?
Phillerlanger, Piper Road.
Thank you.
My question was, is there a way to table this motion and have the yea or nay vote? And if, and then address the motion if people want to? If it's not clear that the a or nay is one-sided, to then take a secret vote?
I would really prefer not to do that. There's no really good way to do that. I mean, what would the purpose of it be?
If it's clearly ones, if the vote is clearly one-sided, then why take an hour to--
Oh, we're not, to this vote right now that we're taking on whether we have a secret ballot?
That's, yeah, to table that.
Yeah, we will not, this will not be by secret ballot.
The motion is to, is to whether we have a secret ballot?
Yes.
If we table that and have a voice vote and--
A voice vote on what? Whether we have a secret ballot?
No, on the issue. On what we're all voting for.
No, I'm sorry.
You can't do it that way?
No, I cannot, sorry.
So it either has to be one way or the other?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullen?
Bill Mullen, Nine Wilson Lane. There's two thousand people here. I respect the opinions of everybody. I will, I don't think we need a secret ballot. It's an honest and open system. Out of the respect for people's time, I hope you will vote down this motion.
Other comment? Seeing nobody standing, we will vote. I will try this by voice vote. All in favor of the motion as made by Mr. Calandrella for a secret ballot, say aye. Now, I had that perfectly in my mind. I had it in my mind exactly how many people voted. And I suspect that the last vote was by an underage person. Let me try it again, just for the fun of it. All in favor of the motion as read, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Was no question which is louder? We have some people in the other room. And I'm going to ask my cohort in the other room if he will take the vote. This is, this is very high-tech stuff here. Hey, Ed? You know, now look, I'm getting twenty dollars for doing this tonight. And I don't want any of you to foul this up.
Hi, Don.
Yeah.
Hello, Don. Hi, Don. Hi, Don.
Yes, yes, Ed, go ahead.
I'll take, I'll take the vote.
Okay. Let's try it, let's try it one more time, and then I may take a quick standing vote. All in favor of a secret ballot, say aye. Oh, that's much better. All opposed, say nay. Hey, the nays have you on volume. I'm going to ask all in favor to please stand. Please be seated. Would all opposed, please stand? The nos clearly have it in this room. Let me find out how the vote went in the other room. It's not going to make any difference because there aren't that many people there. Ed? Ed, how many people? How does your vote go?
Hello, Don? Don, Don, could you, I have so many people walking in. Just how to get the phone. Would you please say it over the speaker? And I'll have them stand and read some of it.
Okay.
Yea or nay.
All right.
Yes, understood you.
Would all people who are in favor of a secret ballot, please stand in the other room? Would all people now sit down? And all people opposed to a secret ballot, please stand. Some of you may think we're off to a difficult start. But we're really not. This is a real, this is a real pain to do this, isn't it? Ed, how do we stand?
I'm getting challenged because the people are still coming in. But I have those opposed to the secret ballot.
Okay, thank you, Ed. The other room showed twenty-two people opposed, fifteen in favor. I declare that the motion for a secret ballot has lost. We will now move on to read the motion. And after we read it, we'll take a second. Mr. Seward moves that the town transfer from the town's recycling and transfer station enterprise fund, formerly known as the Northeast Solid Waste Committee Enterprise Fund, to the town's general fund and appropriate for the purpose of funding a portion of the town's fiscal year 2009 budget and reducing the town's tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2008. Do I hear a second? All right. We will now go into the presentations. Mr. Seward, you will be first. And I believe you have asked for approximately fifteen minutes. And so you will see time on the screen there eventually. This is a new technique we're using this year to try to help me count. So, Mr. Seward, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm here to represent Acton Voters Group. It's a group of thousands of citizens that have asked for a simple choice for Acton voters. The choice tonight is very simple at this special town meeting. It's a vote yes for lower property taxes this year. It will eliminate this year's property tax, 4.1% tax increase. It uses a one-time transfer from a special reserve account. It has no effect on budgets this year. In spite of everything you've heard, no effect on budgets. It's not a budget item. It will cause no cuts in services and no layoffs. And it keeps reserves at a prudent level. And in addition, it helps many Acton voters that need help. The background for this is quite simple. The Neswick Fund gives us a simple choice. The balance is about 4.5 million of 7.2 million in reserves. It's a fund that was collected to cap the landfill. But it's no longer needed for the original purpose. So it's fair, on the face of it, to return it to the taxpayers. And it will help all-- on the face of it, to return it to the taxpayers, and it will help all taxpayers.
Yeah, oh, okay, hold up. The slides are not on the screen? No, we have your—we have your terrific picture on the screen, though, Clint, and—
That's something.
And you were paying me to keep that up there right now. We want—he does look good, doesn't he? Okay, there we go.
All right, I'll start here again.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
So the Neswick Fund is a simple choice. The Neswick balance is about 4.5 million out of 7.2 million in reserves. The Neswick Fund was collected to cap the landfill. It's no longer needed for its original purpose, and it is fair to return some of it to the taxpayers, and it will be a help to all of the taxpayers. So if you vote yes tonight, we're asking to return $2.4 million to help taxpayers. It will eliminate this year's tax increase, and the reserves will remain above a prudent level. The prudent level is the level recommended by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, and it's for best practices for a small town like Acton, and what it will do is keep the reserves above 5%. It will not change any budgets. It will not cause layoffs, in spite of all the literature you've seen. Transfer of reserve funds will not affect the budgets. It's a very simple choice, and we could stop there, except that the response to it has been remarkably complex. Opponents have said preserve the reserves, and the Board of Selectmen is saying it's fiscally prudent to maintain sufficient reserves. And— and so with my next chart, I have to talk now to the magical man behind the curtain. He's a— And I'm— and so here are the facts that we have to deal with tonight. And the facts are, if you look at the far left, you see a red bar graph that shows the $7.9 million that we presently have in the reserve. This is a factual statement. This was as of July 1, and it comes directly out of page 10 on the warrant that you all have received and is out in front and was a handout. But if you notice the red bars, this is the plan of the Acton officials. This was approved by all the boards and is in the warrant on page 10. They're going to spend the reserves from 7.9 million down to 6, down to 3.5, and down to 1.4. That's spending them way down. Acton's done that in the past. Alternatively, if you look at that bar all the way to the left, you'll see a shaded portion at the top. That's the portion that we propose to give to taxpayers here tonight. And if you do, you move that left, far-left red bar down to the blue bar, which is the Acton Voters Group Alternative. Now, the blue bars are where the Acton Voter Group Alternative will keep the reserves over the next three years. I put on there the Massachusetts Department of Revenue reference as recommended prudent reserves for a town like Acton. So all we've really done is transfer some money back to the taxpayers that need it, keep the reserve up above a prudent level. Now, let's look again at the red lines. Starts at 7.9, spends them down to 1.4, well below the recommended levels by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. The preserve the reserve focus means preserve the reserve, but spend them down to risky level. And so you need to ask yourself tonight if preserve the reserve is preserving the reserve or if it's spending it. So we've heard from the opponents that projects will stop if we give this money back to the taxpayers that need it. Returning Neswick funds is not spending them. It's transferring back to the taxpayers. Acton taxpayers have now and will support worthy projects. Projects will not cease. Why then let the taxpayers keep the money? The taxpayers will have more of a say in how the money is spent and will have better control over the spending of the money as we enter these very difficult economic times. The Beacon today said the real issue seems to be where should this 2.4 million of excess funds— where should that reside? Should it reside with the taxpayers or reside with the town? Neswick funds are easier to spend if the taxpayers are not directly involved. That's what's happened before. And Acton has a history of spending the reserves. If it goes back to the taxpayers, they'll be protected. Be careful of any talk that says projects will stop. We have been discussing and funding projects for years. Sidewalks, senior centers, sewers, and school roofs. These will continue to get funded as the case is made to the voters and as voters can see that they're needed. There is another source of funding which we'll enter at— discuss at this point, which is year-end funds will be better available with better controls, and year-end funds can be applied to these projects. For example, the cobblestone and brick crosswalk in front of Town Hall, many people wondered how that was authorized. It wasn't voted at town meeting, and the voters never got that vote. And it was about $100,000. But why did we make that choice without the voters' approval? Why not put that on the senior center or the sidewalks? Or the Narrow Park project, a lot of money was spent there this year. We all like Narrow Park. I like Narrow Park. But the point is, if the voters had had a choice on that, why spend it on the Narrow Park instead of on sidewalks that now we think we need? So the tax refund will help all the taxpayers. We've heard our— our taxpayers include the residential taxpayers. They'll receive 85— 87% of what's coming back. People that own homes need the money. 87% of it will come back. Commercial taxpayers will receive 13%. These are the businesses in town, and Acton is actively trying to protect new business, actively trying to retain the ones we have. And the Beacon had some quotes in today's paper about Hartz saying they're seeing a decline in their business due to the economy. These are people we need to help, and a tax rebate will help them. There is another reason to support this tax rebate. Acton has a lot of vulnerable citizens. We don't think of it that way, but there are thousands here in Acton. Acton property taxes are hurting some people. I collected over 200 signatures in the petition drive. I've talked to many of them. Talked to many more after the petition went in. There was a single mom being forced out by taxes. A retired couple, good friends of mine, been in town 33 years. Their financial advice on retirement was sell your home and move to a low-tax town because your fixed income will eventually not be able to afford the taxes. That's not right. Many long-term taxpayers in town that helped build the town and the schools don't want to be forced out. A mother who has to work to make ends meet to pay taxes signed the petition. Another struggling with tuition with two kids in college—I know that well. I had two kids in college. Any tax relief to these kinds of people will be a help. The economy is increasing their hardships. We've all watched with—I don't even know what you would describe it as—the stock market and credit market has taken tremendous drive— dives the last few days. And in the report, 2005 to Live in Acton on the town website, 29% of Acton seniors are overly burdened by housing and taxes, and mainly seniors have their houses paid off. That means taxes. So we need to vote yes to help these people. Now comes one of those difficult slides. Very— not clear, but our opponents have changed or tried to change the discussion from reserves to budgets. Well, we're not voting on budgets tonight. This is not a budget discussion. This is a discussion of returning excess reserves to the taxpayers. The tax reduction has no effect on budgets this year. They don't change. Next year, they don't change, et cetera. However, in the warrant, there is the Acton officials' three-year plan that shows it needs an override in fiscal '12. That will really hurt taxpayers, and it's particularly risky to the schools. And so rather than debate the budget—which isn't really what we're voting on tonight, we're not debating the budget—but we did make comments as to things that could be done. What actions are we taking to avoid the override? Where's the cost-reduction plan to avoid the override? Where's the plan to control spending? Why expand budgets at almost 6% a year exceeding revenue? But whatever you do, don't be sidetracked tonight. We're not voting on budgets. Our opponents will try to shift the discussion to budgets, but the motion is not about budgets. Budget discussions are for after the town meeting. So questions to keep in mind as you listen to the next presenters. A question is, why spend down the reserves when you say you want to preserve them? Do comparable towns spend reserves down to 1.5% of budgets? None do. I'll tell you that answer, but listen to see what they have to say. Why hasn't the town put together a long-term plan that doesn't rely on risky overrides to balance it? So finally, we have a choice for Acton voters. Vote yes to lower property taxes. Vote yes to eliminate this year's tax increase. Vote yes. It will cause no cuts in services. Has no effect on budgets. It will keep reserves at prudent levels, and it will hack—it will help Acton's most vulnerable citizens. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Seward. We will next hear from Mr. Peter Ashton, who represents the Together for the Future of Acton Group. Mr. Ashton has asked for, oh, 10 or 11 minutes, I guess, to speak, and that's the number you'll see on the screen. I know when the background is white, it's a little difficult for you to see it, but I can see it. So, Mr. Ashton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am here as one of several spokespeople who will urge you to vote no on this motion. There we go. You will hear from several presenters, and we'll try to be brief, as long as we can get the computer working, right? First, I'll discuss the reasons why I believe the Acton Voter Group proposal is not right for our town. Then you will hear from the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and also the school committees, all of whom who have voted to oppose this article. We are living in very difficult and uncertain times. Not since the 1930s have we witnessed such economic turmoil, but Article One does not provide the right solution, particularly for those most in need. Mr. Seward just said that we are not voting on budgets this evening, but by spending reserves to fund this year's operating budget, we are effectively revoting this year's budgets as well as charting a dangerous course for the future that will lead either to budget cuts and layoffs or operating overrides sooner than any of us would like. This proposal is not connected to any realistic set of budget numbers and is not consistent with the three-year financial plan that was supported at April town meeting when voters approved the budgets presented by the selectmen and the school committees. The focus of that plan was to preserve our reserves due to the volatile and uncertain economy that we faced then and has only worsened. If we don't spend these reserves tonight, they will still be there, whatever the future holds. And remember, any use of reserves, including the Neswick money, requires town meeting approval. The economic news we are hearing should be reason enough to decide that we need to hold on to our reserves. If you think that all that is happening in New York and Washington won't affect us, please think again. Right now, estimates place the Massachusetts state budget shortfall this current fiscal year at over $1 billion. Today, the governor called the situation grim and confirmed that tax revenues for September were nearly $230 million below expectations. The governor announced first steps today to reduce the current budget and called on the legislature to make cuts as well. We can expect that local aid could be cut this year and certainly next year. A mid-year loss in local aid is not unprecedented. In 2003, when we saw a 20% cut in Chapter 70 aid to education, and that is one reason we need a strong reserve position now. In addition, there are other uncertainties that make this proposal even more irresponsible. This November, ballot question one will ask voters to eliminate the state income tax, beginning with an immediate reduction in January. The Massachusetts Municipal Association has estimated that this will lead to a 40% reduction in state revenue and likely equivalent reductions in state aid to cities and towns, particularly towns such as Acton, which are at least perceived to be more wealthy. As before, if this occurs, we'll be on our own to solve this problem with our own resources, our reserves. The timing of this proposal is also wrong. These budgets—the method for funding them were approved last April. In my view, this special town meeting is merely an attempt to revisit those votes that were taken over the course of an admittedly laborious four-night session. Let's follow the regular budgetary process. Let's be involved. Let's voice our opinions, and then decide whether it is prudent to use some of our reserves to keep tax increases below the Proposition 2.5 limit next year. This was done a year ago when the Finance Committee proposed the use of about $600,000 in reserves to keep the tax increase below the Prop 2.5 limit. $600,000 is a disciplined and prudent amount. 2.4 million, or 1/3 of our total reserves, is, in my view, not a fiscally responsible amount. You heard Mr. Seward rely on the Mass Department of Revenue and indicate that a reserve position of 5% of operating expenses is okay. I think it is more important to see what the agencies who rate our debt and comment on our financial condition have to say about an appropriate reserve level. Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, the two primary bond-rating agencies, disagree with the 5% position and state that a stronger reserve position is desired, especially in uncertain times. Moody's suggests a reserve position of 5% to 10% of the operating budget or at least 1 to 2 months of expenses, which is equivalent to about 8% of operating expenses. Standard &amp; Poor's is even more careful and suggests a reserve position of as much as 15% of operating budgets, and also states clearly that they have concern about the 5% guideline that many states use. Furthermore, our current reserve position is in line with that of other comparable communities, as this chart shows. All of the communities on the right-hand side of that chart have a bond rating of double A or better, like Acton, which is shown on the left. They are well-managed and in relatively good financial condition. As you can see, several of these other communities actually have reserve positions that are stronger than ours. Winchester has reserves over 20% of their operating budget. Concord is at 17%, and Westford, where our town manager came from, is at 15%. Most of the others are in the 10% range, about where we currently are. But if Article One is approved tonight, our reserve position will fall to about 6%, which is denoted by the red bar. This is less than all but three of the 12 comparable communities shown on the chart. Why should we risk reducing our reserves far below the average of these other communities? The Acton Voter Group proposal states that they are trying to help those on fixed incomes, seniors, and others having a difficult— seniors, and others having a difficult time. While an admirable goal and one that I certainly agree with, I do not believe that this proposal is the right way to accomplish that objective. In fact, those that stand to benefit the most in monetary terms are commercial taxpayers. The largest is a real estate firm, which will receive a tax reduction of almost $24,000 if this article passes. That is equivalent to what 75 average-valued, single-family homes would receive from this plan. Moreover, lower-valued homes would receive a lower tax break in dollar terms than higher-valued homes. In my view, this proposal does not give the greatest help to those who are in greatest need. There are other ways we can provide more direct assistance to those who need it most. Finally, on page 15 of the warrant, you will find the Acton Voter Group three-year plan. First, it claims not to be using reserves to fund the operating budgets, but that is incorrect. In fact, it uses over $1 million in the Regional School District's E&amp;D Reserve Account. Second, it shows a tax increase over the next two years, which is exactly the same as the two-year tax increase in the Acton Leadership Group Plan, which you can find at page 10 of the warrant. That two-year increase is 6.27%. The difference, however, is that the Acton Voter Group Plan, because it holds taxes constant this year, that is, no increase, will produce a tax increase of 6.27% next year or an increase of $504 for the average, single-family home. In contrast, the Acton Leadership Group Plan shows an increase next year of only $176 or about 2.11% on top of this year's increase of about 4%. Since the economic times are only likely to get worse next year, I believe the Town Leadership Plan is a more reasonable and balanced approach. Most importantly, in these uncertain and volatile economic times, why should we, as individual taxpayers, trade off a one-time savings of about $330 for the 2.4 million we give up in reserves that, as a community, we will need in the future? Third, and the most significant issue, is the minimal assumed budget increases in the Voter Group's three-year plan. It shows an average annual budget increase of 3.8% for each of the next three years and would require reductions in anticipated budgets of 1.8 million in fiscal year 10, 3.1 million in fiscal year 11, and 4.7 million in fiscal year 12 relative to the current ALG plan, as shown on the chart to the right. These limited increases simply cannot sustain our current operation and reveal the true intent behind the Voter Group proposal, which is to reduce future budgets, which will inevitably lead to cuts in services and reductions in staff. Furthermore, we know this from history. Although budgets have fluctuated year to year, it is safe to say that in the last 12 years, we have never seen budgetary increases over a three-year period as low as what the Voter Group Plan has. Historically, even in times when budgets have included no growth in terms of services or new hires, they've increased between 4 and 3/4 and 6%. The town has also used reserves in a prudent fashion to avoid the need for operating overrides. When state aid was cut, as I mentioned before, in 2003, this was the only time the budget increased at less than 4%, and we saw significant cuts in services and layoffs. This is not scare tactics. This is reality. If you want to maintain the quality of our schools, the level of services, and the quality of life here in Acton, an annual budget increase of 3.7% will not do it. We must have a strong reserve to smooth out the rough spots in revenues, to fund needed capital, and even to fund unanticipated opportunities, such as when a land purchase comes along, as we will discuss later this evening. Please join with me and vote no on this article so that we can preserve our financial future in these uncertain and risky times. Thank you.
We will now hear from the Town Boards. The Selectmen will be first, represented by Lauren Rosenzweig. The Finance Committee will be second, represented by Steve Noon, and the School Committee will be heard for a short comment, represented by Ms. Hare. Ms. Rosenzweig.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Seward, and thank you, Mr. Ashton. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. Acton is a very desirable community, largely because town meetings through the years have voted to invest in the town's future. We have an excellent, innovative school system. We have a responsive and helpful police and fire department. We take good care of our roads. We offer a wide variety of amenities, parks, recreation fields, open spaces, and libraries. On September 8th, the Acton Voters Group came to the Board of Selectmen meeting to present their recommended changes to the budget that was approved at April Town Meeting. The Acton Voters Group recommends that we spend $2.4 million of reserves on this year's operating budget in lieu of raising taxes. After consideration of the impact that this decision would make on Acton's fiscal health, the Selectmen voted to not recommend this article. Acton is very efficient in providing town services. Acton spends less per person on town services such as police, fire, and public works than comparable communities. We are often cited in Boston Magazine and other local publications as having the best bang for the buck. People want to live in Acton because they feel that for the price of their home and the related tax bill, they are getting a good value. Currently, due to sound fiscal planning, we have built up a reserve that should help us maintain essential services even in the face of the current uncertain economic climate. The handout you received when you entered Town Meeting explains the Nezwick Fund in more detail than I will right now, but briefly, Acton joined a consortium of other towns in the 1980s for trash disposal. Acton was required to generate a high tonnage of trash, and there were penalties if we generated either too much or too little. Acton responded to this dilemma by starting a trash brokerage business. Over the years, this business saved Acton taxpayers $11.7 million. Now that the Nezwick contract is over, the remaining funds are available for other uses. All of Nezwick funds require a Town Meeting vote. We cannot spend that money without a vote from Town Meeting. Now, what is the best use of these reserves? In fiscal year 2008, the Acton Leadership Group Plan, as approved by Town Meeting, reduced the tax levy by $600,000 to share the financial good times with taxpayers. In fiscal year 2009, the Acton Leadership Group Plan, as approved by Town Meeting, used some of the Nezwick funds to fund long-deferred capital needs. The current three-year ALG plan projects using Nezwick funds for capital projects for both the town and the schools for this year. However, if our economic picture worsens, the reserves can also be used, with Town Meeting approval, to help us weather this storm. Why not provide tax relief again this year? The economic climate right now is extremely uncertain. Our budgets are highly dependent on state aid. It is likely that the state will cut local aid this year, as they did in 2003. Holding on to our reserves as recommended by the ALG Plan will allow us more flexibility in maintaining our fiscal year 09 budget and in building our fiscal year 10 budget. If Article One passes and we spend down our reserves on this year's operating budget, we will have less flexibility this year and in future years. We are likely to first cut back on investments in capital and infrastructure, then we will cut back on the nice-to-haves. Finally, we will be forced to cut personnel and essential services. We want to avoid this by deliberate planning for the likely downturn. We have already begun our fiscal year 10 process. We have a new town manager, Mr. Ledoux, who began early this summer looking at our budget with a new approach, based on his 31 years of experience. We have asked the manager to look at ways to make the organization even more efficient. If revenues decline, we will look to prudent use of reserves to maintain essential services until the economy recovers. We don't want to be in a position that jeopardizes health and safety when it could have been avoided. Responsible budgeting means looking at the big picture. The Board of Selectmen recommends you vote no on this proposal. While attractive on the surface, it has unintended consequences. By planning ahead, we can avoid the worst consequences of the current economic downturn. What we really need is to all work together to find the right balance between demand on taxpayers and the level of service that the town wants. Please support prudent financial management. Vote no on Article One, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lauren. Before Mr. Noon starts, we have, for those of you who are standing in the back, if you would like to sit down, we have some seats in the front, and of course, there are some seats in the bleachers. On the other hand, if you'd like to stand, that's okay, too. Mr. Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, let me say, boy, I'm happy to see you all here. We don't usually get this big a turnout, and it's good to see you. Now, as far as the Finance Committee goes, by the way, I'm Steve Noon, Chairman of the Finance Committee. We met with the petitioners on September 9th. Finance Committee's charter really gets into looking at the long-term impact of proposals. At that time, the petitioners did not have a multi-year plan and really couldn't address the impacts on our plan. Beyond that, the committee had two major concerns: the process and timing. In terms of process, this is an important decision. It's not really been analyzed or vetted through what we would consider an adequate or thorough process. As far as the timing goes, there's way too many unknowns. State aid, which we depend on the next few years for 10% increase, is in jeopardy. The governor today asked for 7% cuts in their expenditures, which will probably mean he'll be looking for 7% cuts in what we get paid, too. We have a almost unprecedented number of collective bargaining agreements under negotiation right now. The police, the fire, the municipal workers are all being negotiated as we speak, and it's much more of a climate of rampant inflation than it was a few years ago. Next year, it'll be the teacher's turn. Economic situation just seems to be deteriorating daily. Now, despite this, the ALG did go ahead and update the plan from last Town Meeting. It's in the warrant. I'd be happy to discuss the details, but in the interest of time, I'll just make a few key points. Most importantly, the plan is no operating overrides. Taxes are planned to increase at 2.5% a year, and there's no additional hiring in this plan. Recurring revenue is up 5.3%. Now, if the state aid falls, we could lose a percentage there. Recurring expenses are up 5.7. We plan to use 1.6 billion for capital, and we plan to take that out of the reserves. We also plan to use $624,000 for operations, which is less than 1% of the budget. Now, the majority of the reserve used is planned for capital, but, believe me, if the state aid is significantly less than planned, the capital will have to be deferred to avoid a tax increase or a layoff. Now, there is a projected deficit in FY12. It's 2.4 million, and that will need to be closed, and it's not, as Mr. Seward said, a decision that there's going to be an override. The actual footnote in there says it's going to be closed by spending cuts, tax increases, or a combination of both. There's been no decision on that, certainly not even any discussion at ALG about fiscal 12 as yet. Now, I should point out that many of our past three-year plans had a deficit in the third year out, and many times, that has not actually occurred. For example, the fiscal year five plan showed an override that would be required in fiscal year eight. We actually just closed out fiscal year eight, and we ran a surplus without any override. We have time to deal with fiscal year 12, and we will. Now, a little bit about forecasting in times of uncertainty. As I said, we have more unknowns than we normally would. To deal with uncertainty in a forecast, you test your assumptions over a range of possible outcomes. The purpose of this table is not to overwhelm you with numbers. I know it looks that way, but it's rather just to illustrate a couple of points about how changes in assumptions can have a significant impact on results. I'll direct your attention to case two in the middle of the page. In this scenario, state aid, instead of growing at 10% through the forecast, grows at 2.5%. Inflation causes us higher union settlements, 5.5% instead of the 4.5% we have in the plan, and in general, inflation causes other things to go up by two percentage points: healthcare. We've got in for 10, in case two, it's 12. So let's see what happens to our budget, our balanced budgets in FY10 and 11. Again, I'll direct your attention to the middle of the page, case two. What happens, and this is a cumulative impact over two years, is we wind up in an $8 million deficit. Now, don't get excited. It probably will never happen. It's based on a lot of assumptions, and we certainly would take action before anything like that happened. The reason I bring it up is to show the impact of just fairly slight changes. These are not incredible or outrageous changes in assumptions. The more I've worked on this, the more I realize that my case two is beginning to look more like the probable case. The point of this is you evaluate your reserves against the size of your risk. Now, we talked about the ALG assumptions and the impact of being wrong, but let's compare the two plans in the warrant. Left-hand column is the ALG assumptions. The right-hand column, I'm calling the 3.9% plan. The petitioner's plan does have 3.9% cost growth in... Now, I asked if they had a breakdown in this format, but they didn't have one. That's okay. But let's start with the salaries, because that's where most of our money goes. In the ALG plan, we call for 4.5% salary increases. Now, our collective bargaining arrangements, agreements, I'm sorry, provide for step increases based on experience achieving a certain educational level. So in fact, our 4.5 translates into a base settlement of about 3.5 and then 1% for steps. Now, moving to the other column, just looking at the numbers and not the probability of successful negotiations, I would assume all the steps basically are cut in half, and then each contract is settled at 2.5%. The schools' contract has another year to run at a higher rate than that, and the schools actually account for 74% of our salary dollars. But based on all that, the weighted average salary growth would be at least 3.5%. Now, given that, and the 3.9% overall growth, there's little room for anything else to grow at much more than 4%. So things like healthcare, that we have planned 10% and has actually been increasing at 12% over the last four years, there's only going to be room for about a 4% assumption. So nothing in our recent history or the economic headlines is going to make us believe that a 3.9% plan is an achievable goal. Now, setting aside the credibility of the forecast for a moment, let's just look at the two plans. Unfortunately, Peter Ashton took a lot of my good material here, so I'll go through it fairly briefly. There's three bar charts. Basically, the one shows... Basically, the one shows the tax levy that Peter talked about. Yes, both plans have a six percent over two years. Both plans are exactly the same in FY eleven and twelve. So if you came looking for long-term tax relief, it's not here. It's not in their plan. It's not in our plan. But you, when you look at the spending, which is the second bar graph, you can see there, there's the red column, by the way, they're spending less. Now, I've been doing budgets for various organizations for about thirty years, and whenever the people costs are a majority of the total, I've never seen significant cuts made like this that didn't result in layoffs. I believe that under the petitioner's plan, you'll pay the same tax, but you'll get less service. Now, both plans use the reserves, but the ALG plan uses them slowly and to maintain flexibility. The petitioner's plan cuts them fairly dramatically, by a third, in the midst of the greatest economic crisis this country's seen since the Great Depression. It's risky. But let's talk about risk and return for a moment. Assumption of a greater risk should only be done if it can result in a greater reward. You didn't like that? How shall we proceed, Mr. Moderator?
Anywhere you want, Mr. Noon.
We'll move on, then.
Yes, a point of order? Yes, what we're doing now is we're accumulating the times, ma'am. And when everybody has finished, and I think everybody should hear the whole presentation, even though the time was a little bit misedimated, we will add them up, and I will see how much time the con side has taken versus the pro side, and then I'll let the pro side have another bite at the apple. Mr. Noon.
I will wrap up. Last slide is a shameless plug for my committee. This is the typical budget timeline. We start in July, we finish in April, and encompasses over thirty meetings. There's a lot of opportunity for public input and plenty of time to gather more information and evaluate the impacts on our budget. It's an open process, but we're always looking for ways to improve it. If you have an idea, come to a Finance Committee meeting. Tell us your idea. If you want to know more, come to a Finance Committee meeting. Tell us what your question is. Proving the budget process is a regular item on our agenda. We're meeting Tuesday night, and again on October twenty-third. Conclusion, I just want to say that this proposal is the largest single use of cash this town has ever considered. There are no do-overs. Why make an irrevocable decision now? Why make it in the midst of so much uncertainty? Let the process work.
We will now hear from the Acton School Committee, as represented by Ms. Hare, who is the Chairman of the Acton School Committee. And Jonathan, are you going to speak as well, or are you there for moral support? Moral support. Mr. Chenitz, as you know, is Chairman of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Moderator. Good evening, and thank you all for coming tonight to the Acton Special Town Meeting. We appreciate the support the taxpayers have given the schools throughout the years, and because of your support, the schools are what they are today. The school committee voted unanimously to not recommend this article. It is our responsibility to provide every student in Acton and Boxborough with the best education possible while being mindful of our budgets and our current economy. The school committee is comprised of individuals who understand the implications that this economy will have on all of us. We are committed to continue to look at our budgets throughout our fiscal year ten budget cycle to make decisions that will help support our community while being aware of the financial hardships that this volatile economy may have on all of us. We do not believe that a change in the funding mechanisms mid-cycle with little research is the best time to do this. Just last March, before our town meeting, the Board of Selectmen and the school committee made a choice to pull back on potential spending, which included staff positions, due to the decline in our economy. This resulted in maintaining our level of reserves that you see today. Our ALG model is just that. It is a model. It allows us to review our economy and to provide a suggested budget for all of our taxpayers to vote on at the annual town meeting. Choosing to support this budget or not keeps the real decision-making in the taxpayers' hands. Over the years, we have watched our class sizes continue to increase to a level where we have a student-teacher ratio among the highest in the Commonwealth. If you look at our budgets, you will notice that our largest budget driver is our personnel. Teachers and staff are not only our largest budget drivers, but they are our most valuable assets to our students and their educational needs. The slide before you shows the Acton Leadership Group's plan as compared to the AVG plan. The numbers in red indicate the cuts that the AVG is proposing in order to balance our budgets in future years. As you can see, AVG is planning on cutting school budgets starting next year by one point four million dollars, in FY eleven by two point five million dollars, and in FY twelve by three point nine million dollars. It is important to note that our budgets going forward are based on maintaining our current services and personnel with no new growth. The AVG plan is to take the services, personnel, and programs that you see today and reduce them or increase your taxes by over six percent next year. Our class sizes cannot afford to get larger. Our student services should not be compromised, and our capital needs, such as our roofs and our boilers, must be maintained. On behalf of the Acton School Committee, we do not recommend this article.
One of the suggestions, excuse me, that the League of Women Voters made was that we balance debate, and not necessarily in terms of the number of people that speak, but certainly in terms of time. And I thought we would try that at this meeting. Mr. Seward, his first bite at the apple, took fourteen minutes, by my count. Excuse me? I don't know. Mark? We'll get him in a minute. If someone could, here he comes. Mr. Ashton took thirteen, Ms. Rosenzweig, five, Mr. Noon, thirteen, Ms. Har, three. I count that fourteen minutes for Mr. Seward and thirty-four minutes total for the other group. To balance it up, I would give you another twenty minutes if you wish, but I think you probably can do it in much less than that. They said that everybody should be fair except one person.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Luckily for everybody here, I don't think I could speak for twenty minutes straight, but there were a couple of points that were made that I think I would like to respond to. And the first is that the Neswick balance is not about spending the money. All we're doing is taking it from the reserves and giving it to the taxpayers. The money is still there, but as the beacon said, where should the money reside? With the taxpayers who need it and are hurting, or with the town who can make the case that it's hurting also? And that's what we're here to choose tonight. Do we put it back in the pockets of the taxpayers or not? It was taken from the taxpayers, and it's only fair that some of it should be returned The second issue that needs to be addressed again is that if you look at the red bars on this chart, this is the plan out of the warrant that all the boards that just spoke had voted for, and the plan is very clear. They're going to spend the reserves down to risky low levels. There's really not any other way to put that. And as opposed to that, our plan is send some money back to the taxpayers. It's still there when we need it, when times really get bad, but hey, keep it above some reasonable level. I suggested that in my presentation, that when other people talked about risky levels, they would have to answer that question of, how come they're spending it down to one and a half percent? Is that a risky level? And I didn't hear that answer. Maybe you did? I didn't hear it. I heard that Moody's and Standard and Poor's and others are saying it should be five percent or even more, but I didn't hear an answer on why we're talking about one and a half. And so what I would suggest is we need a better plan, and a good way to do that is to put the money back in the taxpayers' pockets now. When it's needed by the town, it will be there. The third major point that I made, and again, is that we're not voting on budgets tonight. We're not impacting budgets. This transfer of reserves doesn't impact budgets. And I said that our opposition would have to change the subject from how they're spending reserves down to risky levels, and the way they would do that is to get into hypothetical votes, hypothetical budgets, charts that were almost indecipherable with numbers, and try to confuse you. But the real question here is to not be sidetracked. We're not voting on budgets. That's a year-long process. We've given input to it. The boards have listened to us. We've briefed them. We've gotten their feedback, but we're not voting on budgets. We're voting on protecting the reserves, and our opinion is the best way to do that, give some money back to the voters, help them now, short term, with a tax relief, and make sure that those reserves get protected over the years. Charlie Wood, do you have a statement?
Normally, you do work me into this thing, if you will. I'd appreciate it. It's okay, yes. What would you like to do? I recognize that you're not missing.
We haven't started yet. We're waiting for your open.
Well, there you have it. Go right ahead, Mr. Cadillac.
Good evening. I have some good news for the school committee. The roofs and boilers do not require one penny of reserves. The univents and boilers, which were voted last April, are all going to be paid from twenty-year bonds, and so will the roofs. That's good, isn't it? Don't need the reservoir. Similarly, I'll be very brief. Any large constructions, such as senior centers or public safety buildings or new schools, have always been funded with long-term bonds, not with reserves. But I want to switch subjects. I want to talk about bond ratings. It's a very intriguing issue to bring up. First of all, oh, that's another one. I want the one with all the, hang on one second, we'll get there. We took a look at the bond ratings versus reserves for Massachusetts towns, which had triple-A and double-A bond ratings, and if we find a chart, we'll show it to you, but I'll tell you about it. There is no relationship between reserves and bond ratings. You can go look it up at Department of Revenue website. The numbers are all there. Every town has its own situation, and you know, it's a very good thing that there is no relationship between reserves and bond ratings, because if there were, Acton would have a triple-Z rating. Couple of years ago, we spent our reserves down to zero, and we had an override. As you saw from Clint's chart, the ALG plan is to spend the reserves down to one point five percent. How does that fit with protecting bond ratings if there was a relationship? It doesn't make any sense. Why bring it up? It's a red herring. Similarly, to say that there will be cuts, and at the same time, to say that the three-year plans are just estimates. If there are estimates, then obviously, things will change. We should be taking action now to do something in this back economy to change the way we I have to digress, and it wasn't planned, but late this afternoon, I heard from several people that many of you who have children in the schools have had your children come back, and those of you who are here will know, the rest of us will just have to believe it, the children came home to tell you that, how you should vote on this. That's a very bad thing to do. Well...
Let Mr. Cadillac have his say, please. We don't need comments for the background.
I will repeat, those of you whose children came home with those stories know about it. The rest of you can believe otherwise. But let's not use our children that way. That bothers me. Very briefly, let's go to overrides. You heard that, well, there is no override in fiscal twelve. If you turn to page ten of your warrant, you see that by fiscal twelve, the plan is to have spent the reserves, and then what? Now, it's not really too much of a speculation, because Acton has a pretty well-established history of overrides. We've had two in the last six years for a total of six point eight million dollars. Unless we change the way things go, that's going to happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Do we have a point of order?
Yes, sir.
What is your point of order, Mr. Hunter?
There seemed to be some dissent in the audience, a judge from people that had children that came home. I think some, one of them might be induced to tell their side of what came home today from school. I don't know.
Well, I would ask you for us to forego that and get on with this business, but it's an interesting point. Thank you very much, though. Mr. Seward, are you?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would just like to sum up and say it's a simple choice tonight. It's a choice to help taxpayers by giving two point four million of excess reserves back to the taxpayers for safekeeping until such times the town may need it, and I urge everyone to vote yes. Thank you much.
All right. After a long and very balanced debate, we will move on to the town meeting members portion of this town meeting. And normally, at this point, you get up and do one of three things. You ask a question. You give pro or con argument. Based on some past experiences, I'm going to try something new tonight, and we will take all questions that people have first. So when you go to the microphones, you don't need to worry about a pro and con microphone at this moment. Go to any microphone that you wish. This is only for this room. Ed, I'll give you some thoughts in a moment for the other room. And ask your question. If you wish to direct it to a specific person or board, you may do so. You may only ask one question each, because we may have a great many people asking questions. I would give some advice to the answerer. Let us listen carefully to the question and answer that question, not some question that we wish was asked. Well, I'd love to tell that to some people debating later tonight, too, you know. And also, when you're answering a question, please do not use that as an opportunity to... to give more of your point of view. We've had that, so now we want just an answer to the question. So you may now go to any microphone, and I will recognize you, and you may ask a single question. If you have a second question, you'll have to go to the back of some other line, and I'll recognize you. I hope I get all first-time people before I take any second-time people, though. Ed, in the second room, can you hear me in the other room? Just nod if you can hear me in the other room.
Yes.
Everybody... Oh, you can. Oh, that's great. I can see very clearly microphone five, and I would like you to use microphone five for all questions. So anyone in the other room, and you have a substantial number of people, if for this purpose of asking questions, you would just go to microphone five, I will be able to work you in the room myself, because I can see how many people are there. So if you would do that, that would be helpful, and I would start off at microphone one, the lady at microphone one. If you would announce your name and your street, it would be very helpful.
Shereen Reisbeck, Homestead Street. I have a question. I'm not really quite certain who to direct it to. I'm curious as to whether or not anyone in this room has a reasonable idea of what having this special town meeting is costing the town of Acton.
Now, you see, here's where questions can fool you. You have asked if anyone knows. There may be several people who know, but you probably want to know as well.
Yes.
So you've really got to say to them, would you tell me as well? All right.
Would you please tell me if you know how much this is costing the town of Acton?
Who would like to answer that question? Town manager would like to answer the question. Right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And a lot of the cost is due to the audiovisual that we decided to put in here this evening, because we felt this was a room that might be difficult to see or hear in, but total estimated cost is approximately $16,000.
Thank you.
Sixteen thousand or sixteen hundred? Sixteen thousand. No, because I got a figure this afternoon on the part of it, then. Okay, fine. $16,000. Thank you. At microphone two.
Paul Gabrie, 12 Assabett Crossing. The question is for Mr. Seward. Does one penny of the Nezwick funds get spent by the ALG, or does every penny get spent by approval of the town meeting?
All reserves, as we heard from Lauren Rosenzweig, all reserve funds get approved by town meeting, by a vote at town meeting.
At microphone four.
Alex Horvitz, Jefferson Drive. If the town manager could tell me something about our bonds, I know Mr. Cadillac said that we have bonds that we're using to pay for things. Given the current economic climate, particularly in the bond market, what is our ability to raise money through the bond market at this point in time? And can you project, given the credit crunch, what that might be in the future?
Mr. Paulson from... We'll answer the question.
Well, I mean, that's certainly a difficult question to answer at this point. I can just give you the example of the state treasurer, Cahill, went to the bond market, and unfortunately, on Monday, to borrow about $400 million for primarily our local aid payment, and I think only came up with about 60% of that. And my understanding, he would happen to be talking on NECN this morning, that what he normally gets at 2%, he ended up getting it at 6%. So I can't really answer your question right now. I think we're all trying to figure this out, but just based on that kind of close-to-home experience of the Commonwealth, certainly is worrisome.
I will take the lady at microphone five in the other room.
My name is Elizabeth Muff, and I live on Windermere Drive. I wondered if we can vote on this now, instead of everyone asking some...
You would need to make a motion to move the previous question, and it takes two-thirds to pass. It's not a debatable motion. We're just into, these people have sat here for a long time wanting to ask some questions, and I'm not sure that the motion will carry, but if you move it, I would take it.
Mr. Moderator, because I can't see you.
That's okay. It's not much to look at, anyway, so... If you would like to say, I move the previous question, that would be the correct form.
Mr. Moderator, I'm... Can you say that again? I'm sorry. I moved to what? The previous question?
You're new to this process, aren't you?
I've been here since...
Now, here it is. Let me give it to you again. I move to cut off debate.
I move to cut off debate.
Do I hear a second? Ed, you will have to tell me if in your room, you get, by your thought, two-thirds majority or not. All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ed, try that in your room, and tell me if you get two-thirds. We certainly got two-thirds in this room. Did he say two-thirds? Ed, did you say you got two-thirds?
Don, we had the two-thirds vote there.
All right. Debate is cut off, and we will vote. All right, this takes a simple majority to pass. I will try it first by voice vote, and Ed, you try it first by voice vote in your room. And since everybody can hear me, they can all say it at the same time, I guess. All in favor of Mr. Seward's motion, please say aye. Did that with great gusto. All opposed, please say nay. There's definite gusto there. Ed, what do you think you've got in your room? Or could you not tell?
Don, I'm going... Did you hear the sound in the main room?
No.
Could I put it on for you?
No, I just want you to tell me...
Well...
Whether you think you had a majority of people saying yea or nay.
I would say the majority said nay.
All right. I couldn't tell in this room. So I'm going to ask you to stand. All in favor of the motion, please stand.
Oh, boy. All in favor.
Please be seated. Would all opposed, please stand. All right, please be seated. I'm going to take that once more. Would all in favor, please stand?
In both rooms, Don?
Excuse me?
In both rooms, do you want them to stand?
No, just you... We already know how your room voted by voice, so I'm just trying to look at it now. I see all the people in favor standing. Would you please be seated? And would all opposed, please stand? I'm sorry to tell you, sit down, please. Thank you. I cannot call it. It's too close to call. So what's the journey? Go home and watch the other debate? Connie, would you come forward? We're going to have to count this vote, and we'll have a tellered count. And if all the tellers would come forward, we will count your room, too, Ed, by teller. Yeah, they are, we're counting it here. We are counting it here.
There as well.
Yes, they're counting in both places. Ed, you are counting it in the other room, I'm assuming. And if I could have your attention, please, if I could just get your attention for a moment, please. It's been my experience over a fairly lengthy tenure at this job, that after we count the vote, there will be some of you who may wish to leave and go home. I just say one word of reminder, in hopes that you will not do that, and that word is reconsideration. I just want to remind you of that. How many of you have got no idea what I'm talking about? Well, okay, let me tell you, for just the fun of it, you're certainly entitled to know. There is a motion, which is a perfectly legal motion, which says that after a vote has been counted and has been announced, that if somebody stands up at the same session of town meeting, he can say, I move that we reconsider the vote that was made under Article One. And if that passes by two-thirds, it's two-thirds vote, the vote is null and void, and we're back to dealing with Article One, or the motion under Article One, all over again. Two-thirds is hard to get, because most people consider it a ploy and very undemocratic. But it's a reasonable thing. I think it's done elsewhere. I think even the great General Court has done this occasionally, probably. And so it behooves you to stay. Just to complete the discussion, if there were two sessions of this town meeting, which there are not going to be, you can ask for reconsideration in the second session, but then it takes three-quarters vote to pass, and you have to post it eight hours before the meeting. Does that answer your question? How many think I told you more than you really wanted to know? It's okay, that's what I thought, too. But that's why they pay me so much, to do this. Are we ready for the vote?
The warrant reads that this is an enterprise account?
Yes.
And under statute, believe that enterprise accounts require two-thirds vote to appropriate in or out.
I will ask the town council to answer that question.
Special legislation has authorized majority on this.
I knew that. Yes. Come down to a microphone. I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
How many motions for reconsideration can there be?
Hopefully, none, but really, at a given session of town meeting, one.
So one doesn't immediately...
No, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. You have a great voice, it's just that I'm getting... Be careful.
Rick Fallon, 27-Flock Mill Road. So if one moves for reconsideration immediately afterwards, and then motion's voted down, that's the end of it. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think at this session of town meeting, that would be true. I would want to look at the town bylaw to check that, but I think that's right. It never has happened before, and it won't happen tonight, believe me. But thanks for the question. Are we ready to vote? Connie, should I ask all the people who are in favor to stand now, or... Okay. Yes. Yes, you have a green card, and please show your green card. This is different from the green cards that I ask people to show when they come to do work at my house. But... Yes. Show the green card. It says you have voting status, as Mr. Chenness just said. All in favor, please stand. You will be standing for a bit. We'll not close the doors, so we can't have anybody else coming in. We'll close the doors as well, so that no one else can come in now, because we're counting the votes, yes and no. So we really can't have people coming in during the process. The answer to your question on reconsideration was, I knew it, I was right. It's only one time.
I thought we'd be going on for hours with debate, but I did think most people had their minds made up, anyway. There we go. Look at tonight, if I get a penny of voter, I'd be ahead. No, I wouldn't be. There's only 1,615 people we counted in both rooms, but if you look at the other room, it looks... You know, one time...
You know, one time, one time we had thirty-three hundred, and it was in this room. Well, since they made it handicapped and testable, they've taken away a lot of freedom in this room. And then in those days, actually, we had a lot of curious people driving the other way. Times have been very good. We will take the no votes in just a minute. We're just, you know, churning in their cards, and this takes a little bit of a time. Connie, are we ready to take the no votes? We are, okay. They're still counting there? Okay. Sure. You know, the AV system, the AV system here is better, much better than it is in the other room. Yeah, it's, it's a much better arrangement, really. We need to do something in the other room, because this is not a good place to hold it. We couldn't do it for a long time. All right, we have all the yes votes. We will now take the no votes. All people opposed, please stand. Just read this motion. You have to know something about the article to understand it, but it's a funny sounding motion. Just read it. Maybe you said, "What?"
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
This is Article Two.
Yeah, it's Article Two. They couldn't pay me enough, believe me. They don't pay the electorate enough. The other ones are really don't get paid enough. They put in a tremendous, well, so do you guys. So do you guys. You're putting in a lot of time. Well, it is, but, you know, I think it's right. It just passes. We're gonna be managed by flubbersite. Yeah. Hey, Bob. Do it, and it's easy for them to do it. Yeah, they just say, "Do it," and you have to live. It's like an unfunded mandate. I've noticed in a number of associations that I deal with. Is this a free? Do I get this for free, or do I have to pay for this? Yeah, yes, Ed. I, I think you've given the numbers to Connie, right?
Do you want me to send the numbers down to you and you can read it?
Well, well, uh, let me ask Connie what she wants to do. She's in charge of the county, so I'll call you right back.
Thank you.
Could I just have your attention for a moment, please? We don't have the vote yet, but I want to discuss something with the other room. You don't really need to listen, but you just have to be quiet so they can hear me, that's all. Excuse me. Ed? In the other room.
Yes.
I need the vote up here. You can keep it to tell people how they voted, but we'll count it and incorporate it with the vote here. I think it's on the way now, or at least I hope it is. Thank you. Now you can go back to your conversations. We'll have the vote in just a minute. For those of you who are leaving, I, I would suggest to you that if you wish to do that, you certainly may. But if for some reason you wanted to come back in, you really can't do that. So if you leave the building and go home and watch this on television and find out it's still going on an hour from now, which it will not be, but if it were, you really can't come back in. Don't give up hope, we're getting closer. Hey, John. Hey John.
What has it been comments, a box over there?
Uh, I think Ann was walking around with the box. Oh, there she is.
Oh, there she is.
No, I'm not talking. Exceeded my time. It's Pat Clifford, we'll talk to Article Two of the, uh...
Okay, okay. Well, I, I tell you, I will bet you, I bet this better than a fifty percent chance we get a motion for reconsideration. Yeah, well, he wants to, he wants to do it on the basis that we can only do it once, and we do it once to get it over with. I told him, not gonna happen, but if you want to protect yourself and then go home, go ahead. What he doesn't know, what I, what I did inform him though is that the selectmen of the public make their comment even after he does it. That's what our bylaw says. All right, we have the vote. The vote is as follows. Uh, yes in favor, six hundred and forty. No opposed, nine hundred and forty-seven. The motion has lost.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
For what, sir?
To prohibit reconsideration of this vote.
You can't do that. There's no such motion to prevent reconsideration. You could, if you wished to, and I think this gentleman does wish to, vote for reconsideration now, vote it down very quickly, uh, by the, uh, by not achieving two-thirds, which I would be very quick to declare. And, uh, then we can't vote it again, and that does the same thing that you wanted to do. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Go, go right ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I move to reconsideration of the vote.
Of the vote under Article One?
Under Article One.
Do I hear a second? It's moved and seconded. All in favor of reconsideration, say aye. Opposed, say nay. It's the way it went in your room too, wasn't it, Ed?
Yes, it was.
Yes. Reconsideration motion is lost. I'm going to hold the meeting in, uh, in abeyance, uh, for a few minutes while people leave.
Before you leave, I'd just give you the count what happened in this room. Yes, one thirty-six, the days, four fifteen.
I would be too fast.
Yeah, right.
Only people that are gonna stay.
It's, um, good number. Well, I, I, of course, I couldn't really tell in the other room, but the other room voted, uh, definitely voted it down. But, uh, here, I wouldn't have said in this room, oh, let's see, here's the other term. One thirty-six to four fifteen, so in here, oh, wait a minute, Jim, look at this. Five oh-four to five thirty-two. Yeah, I, I knew, yeah.
Yeah, I was close there.
Yeah.
Your eyes do not take so much time.
Yeah. Yeah, probably are. I mean, excuse me? I did, I, I did a short recess, sorry. Okay, the meeting will come back to water, please. Meeting will come to water, please. Uh, I, I'm sorry. We're going to continue the meeting now, and I'm going to move on to Article Two. If I could have silence, please, that would be helpful. Thank you very much. The motion under Article Two is Mr. Ken Segear Hughes moves that the town authorize the transfer, acceptance, raising, appropriation, and expenditure of the funds and the acquisition, reconfiguration, restriction, transfer, delegation, and conveyance of the real property as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? It's moved and seconded, Mr. Segear Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Ken Segear Hughes, I'm the Chair of the Acton Community Preservation Committee. Normally each year at town meeting, at the April town meeting, uh, the CPC brings recommendations for funding uh, of the community preservation projects to the town meeting for approval. Tonight, we're bringing a recommendation to the special town meeting uh, because we have an opportunity to, to acquire land for open space, uh, which will probably not be around and, uh, wait for us until April, so we're, we're doing it tonight. The CPC recognizes that especially with open space properties, uh, or opportunities, sometimes we have to act outside the normal annual process that we have, and this is one of those occasions. So I want to start first with a brief overview of the CPC process for those who are new to it. Uh, the Acton Community Preservation Fund was established in two thousand and two by the town when it adopted the CPA law, and it's funded by surcharge on property taxes and also a hundred percent matching funds from the state. Each year since the enactment, um, the CPC solicits and, uh, reviews proposals for funding under the law, and as I said before, um, after deliberation and review recommends to the town meeting uh, what projects to be funded and the funding levels for each project and the four categories of, that are covered by the law, which are the open space, historic preservation, community housing, and recreation. To date, since enacted in Acton, the CPA has provided over six million dollars for funding local community preservation projects. And each year since funding, the CPC has recommended setting aside a certain amount of funds for future open space acquisition. And currently, we have about, uh, or exactly one point seven five million dollars set aside um, in the open space account for future acquisition. This past summer, the Acton Conservation Trust became aware of an opportunity uh, for some open space adjacent to town conservation land. And in talking to the land, landowner, the, the, uh, Acton Conservation Trust uh, realized that the property would likely be, be sold, uh, and that the loan, landowner was interested in selling to the town in order to preserve the land as open space. So the ACT worked diligently with the town to try to, uh, negotiate this, this, uh, this land, um, and last month came before the CPC with a proposal for providing funding for this, this, uh, open space. The CPC reviewed and discussed the proposal in open meetings. Uh, we walked the site, and we reviewed the, the proposal, uh, and ultimately recom- or voted to recommend to, to fund this proposal, uh, for the purchase of open space. We, we voted to spend, to allow up to seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars to be, to be used for this purpose. Uh, and the vote was a unanimous vote by the CPC. Uh, I'd like to turn over the presentation now to Andy McGee from the Open Space Committee to present more of the details of the proposal and to hopefully answer all the questions that you might have about it. Mr. Moderators, would that be all right?
Yes. Mr. McGee, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Ken, and thank you, uh, town meeting, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I am here, uh, probably best, uh, to state that I'm the Chair of the Open Space Committee, and that is the committee that brought this proposal to CPC with the support of the Acton Conservation Trust. Um, real quickly, the Piper Lane Great Hill purchase is a proposed purchase of five point five acres of open space adjacent to, uh, the Great Hill Conservation Lands. It also includes, the lot is commingled, with a point four acre lot with a historic residence on our, a structure that was built in eighteen forty, or circa eighteen forty. Our proposal is to purchase the property, place a conservation restriction on the open space, place a historic preservation restriction on the residence, retain the open space as part of the Great Hill Conservation Lands, and resell the residence, um, and then return any proceeds from the sale of the residence to the Community Preservation Open Space Fund. This is, this is the, uh, Great Hill Conservation Area. Whoops. Go back. I don't think that's gonna work. I'm, I'm hoping people can see this. In the upper left corner is, uh, to, to set the setting here, in the upper portion is Route Two. Kind Great Hill is bordered on the east or, uh, on the right-hand side there by Piper Road, School Street, uh, down below, and Route twenty-seven Main Street, uh, on the west side. Um, that was interesting. Um, the Great Hill Conservation Area is probably, it is the largest single per, single conservation land that we hold in the town of Acton. There are actually larger, two larger parcels which are comprised of two different types of conservation lands, but this is the single largest. It is also probably the most heavily used conservation land. And if you look at this, uh, photo, this, this aerial photograph, you'll see to the east the Bruce, uh, Bruce Wood, uh, neighborhood. The southern side is the South Acton Village, uh, the south and southwest. Uh, to the direct west is the Tuttle Flint Road neighborhood, and to the northwest is the, um, uh, Kelly's Corner neighborhoods back in there. Heavily used lands, there's also, in the bottom corner there, you'll see the green patch there, that's a soccer playing field, and the little pond there is a fish pond. I'd like to zoom in a little bit on what we're looking at, and actually, let me go back there for a second. You can see down in the very bottom corner is the parcel that we are proposing to purchase. And as you can see, it sort of juts into the Great Hill lands. The parcel is five point five acres. As shown in this photograph, it, uh, abuts the Great Hill Conservation Lands. It is also literally overlooks the South Acton Historic District, which is the line in purple on the map. It is actually currently pretty actively used as conservation lands. Uh, there is a trail that actually cuts through the middle of the property that people have been using for twenty-five years without recognizing the fact that they were actually on somebody else's property. This is the house that we're talking about. This is a, as I say, circa eighteen forty. This house had a little bit of an interesting history. It was a, uh, actually a house in South Acton Village, it was connected to the post office, and at the turn of the last century was purchased in a sort of cash and carry situation, if you will, um, which was actually not uncommon back then, when people would, when you bought a house, you bought the house, and you carried it somewhere else. And that's what they did here, they brought it up, uh, up the road a piece, uh, put a porch on it, and there's actually another addition on the backside. It's a three-bedroom home in, in relatively good condition. Our purchase considerations on this property is that it is, has been identified in the open space plan as a high priority parcel, it abuts Great Hill Conservation Land. It's protective of the South Acton Historic District, I didn't point out in that photograph, but half of that parcel is sort of the high point of, of the, um, of the area. If there was a development on the hill, it would literally loom over the South Acton Historic District. We're also looking at the preservation of the house. Uh, looking, the house is listed on the Acton Cultural Resources list. And I have to point out that the, part of what's driving this, and as, as Ken said, why we can't wait till April Town Meeting, is the owner has an alternate proposal from a developer who owns an adjacent piece of property and is looking to, or, so the owner tells us, would use that adjacent piece of property to build a road in, through the house and up into the hill. Uh, so it would result in the demolition of the house, and as I put in here, potential for five lots, given the zoning. Uh, my bear concern is that that's not what we'd be talking about if you're putting expenses, putting a road up in there, you'd skip zoning and go to a forty B development, which could, could, uh, allow for considerably greater development. Um, in the orange is the parcel that is owned by the developer. And this is, it's an interesting piece because it's actually was part of the lot of the house directly to the south. The developer kept this piece, it's not a buildable lot. So it was clearly a speculative buy fifteen years ago, um, with the idea of someday maybe getting into these backlands. Um, and that is apparently what is, is the alternate proposal. Our funding request is really not, we're not saying we're buying this property tonight. We still got some unanswered questions, we don't have a purchase and sale agreement with the owner. We are looking for authorization essentially to, if we can come to a purchase and sale agreement that meets the conditions that we have to live to, and meets the owner's expectations, um, that we can proceed. So we have asked for seven hundred and thirty from CPA Open Space Set Aside Fund. Seven hundred thousand, that would be toward the house and the parcel, and thirty thousand would be to the, um, to miscellaneous expenses, I'll get into that in a second. The funds we're asking for are not funds, that we're not asking for funds out of this year's budget or even last year's budget for that matter. The set aside monies have been put aside since two thousand and three, and if you sort of come to the seven hundred and thirty, we're really spending set aside funds that were put aside specifically through the CPC process in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, and two thousand and five for the purchase of open space. I would also note that those funds were set aside when there was a hundred percent match by the state, so those funds are actually, also, you can say, half, half the amount is from the state. Sort of breaking out the details of this thing, the un, we have appraisals. The undeveloped parcel is appraised at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The historic house and lot, we actually have, because it's a commingled lot, we have to sort of spin it out, and we actually have two different appraisals, but it's in the neighborhood of three forty to three fifty-seven. Uh, the assessed value is three fifty-seven as well. Um, so we, we know we're in that ballpark. The expenses, we need... The expenses, we need a conservation restriction, a historic restriction, home inspections, legal fees, probably survey for the conservation restriction. We've asked for 30,000 toward that. As I said, we're looking for resale of the house and the lot, and again, the appraised value is something in the neighborhood of 340. If we see that and we come to an agreement at the appraised value with the developer, I mean with the owner, the net land purchase actually would be on the neighborhood of 320, and the rest of the monies would go, 320 to 390. The rest of the money is going back to the CPC Open Space Fund. Now, who's kidding who? We're not going to flip this house tomorrow in this market. That's probably the first question people have been asking me, is we're buying a house in this market? The only thing I could say is we're buying low. How long it will stay low is anybody's guess. Obviously, there's pluses to this house. There are folks who are very interested in buying historic structures, and there are folks, very many folks out there are very interested in buying houses that abut 250 acres of conservation land. So I think we have a project here. That said, we have not done a home inspection yet, we have work to do, and we will not buy the house if it turns out it's eaten by termites or whatever, and we'll back away from the deal. But the hope is, we will be able to do so. Now, a couple of conditions. We can only buy up to the appraised value. We cannot get into bidding war with the developer, and we've told the owner that. The positive thing here, and this is the truth, this is the case in all municipal most conservation-type land purchases, you really got to have an owner that wants to work with you on the thing. And this owner does. He wants to preserve this. He grew up here as a little boy, he wants to preserve the land, he wants to preserve the house, but he's got expenses in his life too. But he's saying to us, and he reiterated it when we talked the other day, if we can get him in his appraised value, he's got, we've got the deal with him. And I said, well, you know, if the developer comes back and says, "I'll double it," and he says, "I'm not going to listen." Now, maybe he will, but if he does, we can't go there. We can't bid, we can't get into bidding war, we can only pay the appraised value. So that is what essentially we are asking for tonight, and looking for your favorable vote, and I think that's the end of my presentation, so thank you very much.
Any comment from the Board of Selectmen, please?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously supports this article.
And from the Finance Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Following Selectman McGee's presentation on behalf of the Open Space Committee, the Finance Committee unanimously agreed to recommend this article. We agree that this purchase is consistent with both the goals of the Community Preservation Act and the town's planning documents. We feel the funds collected under the CPA were set aside over several years by the town for an open space fund and allow the town to take advantage of opportunities like this. The purchase of the home on the property offers an opportunity for stewardship of a historic resource as well as an economic lever to defray the costs. And finally, the CPA dollars that were in this set aside fund include a 100% state match, which further mitigates the actual costs to the citizens of Acton.
Comments from the town meeting members, please. Yes, ma'am, at microphone four.
Yes, Helen Scheth, Meadowbrook Road. I'd just like to make a few comments on properties that I've seen the town acquire. For example, the property on Woodbury Lane that was formerly the Valencourt Residence and the property on Main Street across the street from the town hall that's at the corner of Route 27 and Newtown Road. As far as I can see, the Valencourt Residence serves to multiply the stray cat population in town. It seems that every few months, there's a new litter of kittens being born around there, whether around the garage or on the porch there. They oftentimes, the town leaves what used to be a porch open, and it makes a wonderful area for stray cats to frolic. As far as the property that is across from the town hall on Main Street, the town spent a great deal of money to re-roof the property, to paint, put in new windows, et cetera, and re-landscape the property. Yet, this summer, they let weeds grow, and it served as an eyesore to the residents in the area. So I'm wondering...
Microphone number two.
This must have been an act of God, or someone, or someone on the Preservation Committee who does not want any thoughts uttered against this. So I'm wondering what in reality is going to happen to this new house that is acquired that is probably in worse condition considering its age than that of the property that was recently acquired that fronts on Main Street.
Mr. McGee, if you'd like to answer that?
All I can say is it is a much different situation than the examples you gave. The house, the historic house in the parking lot was preserved because it was in the Historic District. The problem with using that is that we have no septic system for it. It is in bad shape. The Woodbury House, on the other hand, I've been in, and that's a solid structure, I don't know if people know this, but you actually go in there and there are steel beams holding up the floor, the previous owner had a massive library in there. So it's a pretty solid structure. That said, this house is in fairly sound condition. Now, I'm no home inspector, but I've been in it, I've been in the basement, I've crawled around. We will do a home inspection, and if it is not in purchasable condition, we will not do this deal. It's not my intent, nor the Open Space Committee's intent, to get ourselves into a situation. The Woodbury was also next door to town hall, and the thought when we purchased that is that it is going to remain part of the town hall complex. There is no intent to keep this in the town hall complex. This is down in South Acton, up a private lane, we're looking to transfer this property as quickly as we can. That's all I can say.
At microphone one, Mr. Black.
David Black, Central Street. Used to serve on the Board of Appeals, so I've seen 40Bs up close. You're getting a bargain here, I'm thrilled that the landowner is willing to work with you. The, that open space that you've got appraised at about 300, $330,000 to a 40B developer, that appraisal goes out the window, that land is worth seven figures easily. So this is a bargain, this is a great time to get it while the development economics are not there, it's hard to raise money for 40Bs. I urge support of this, it's not going to become available again.
At microphone three, Mr. Swenson.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. My question is, if this deal should fall through for some reason, what happens to the $730,000? Where does that end up? Does that end up getting spent for something else, or what?
Mr. McGee.
No, that is dedicated funds in the Community Preservation Act Fund. The only way those funds can come out of there is if the Community Preservation Act Committee recommends them to town meeting, and even then, they can only be spent on those things under the Community Preservation Act. So any monies that don't get spent, just stay in the fund. The fund is sitting there right now. We are not actually transferring any money right now, but to go forward with the negotiations, I got to have something in my pocket, so they're basically saying, yes, if you can pay up to the appraised value for this, we support it. But if you can't, or if you find a house in the subdivision somewhere, we're not going to support that. This is only for open space preservation.
I think that answers the question.
Thank you.
At microphone two, Mr. Cadillac.
Charlie Cadillac, Paul River Road. Quick question. Andy, you said that you cannot pay more than the appraisal. Does that mean you have to pay the appraisal, or can you pay less?
No, we can pay less, and we're, I mean, not to spill all the beans on the deal, but the owner actually, when we first talked to him, told us what the price was that he had been talking to the developer about. He said, "I would prefer to save it, I could probably go a little lower." So we're hoping that we'll be somewhere below the appraised value, although the offer that's made is slightly above the appraised offer from the developer. So ideally, we'll be less. Not a lot. I mean, he's looking to get his value out of the house.
Okay. Just if I can follow with a comment?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Cadillac.
I think it's a good idea, but I think we, as a town, should get as good a deal as is possible. You've heard earlier that the state can't borrow any money, can the developer? You know, if this deal goes through with the town, the owner gets paid. There's no risk to the owner of not getting paid. That's worth something, so I would just like to see us negotiate on that basis.
Thank you.
Selectman at microphone four.
Hi, Barry Rosen, Windermere Drive. Kind of got two questions for him, Mr. McGee. The first is, are we dependent upon the state giving us 100% matching funds? That is, suppose this year, there's nothing.
Mr. McGee.
No, these funds are already, this is already done.
These are banked?
These are banked.
Okay, these are the ones we've already gotten, we're not bidding on current year.
Yeah, as I said, we put aside monies every year, up to 1.75 million. To get to 730,000 was, we got there in the first three years, 2003, 2004, 2005. That's where these monies are coming from.
Okay. Have we thought at all about, assuming we can't flip this house, which I think is probably a good assumption in this market, and the deal does go through, have we set aside any maintenance money to maintain the house and to secure it in its current condition to make it as marketable to the outside market as possible?
Mr. McGee.
Yes, that is a consideration. We have, we will obviously have some carrying costs. I will tell you, we're estimating about $10,000 based on, based on the house next to town hall, as a matter of fact. We have lost tax revenue for that period of time as well, so there are expenses that are there. Now, part of that will be, the hope is to mitigate some of that maintenance, whatever repair, to the land stewards as well as another group that's forming to do exactly that while we're holding it. But there will be some expenses, and it's not guaranteed that we can get all of that out of CPC funds. We're, that 30,000 that we're asking for, carrying costs and expenses, that will cover probably most of our expenses, but CPC is also very careful about what you can spend money for and what you can't. So a new boiler or a new hot water heater, we can't. But repairing the house, historic structure, yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sawyer, at microphone four.
Bill Sawyer, Spring Hill Road. Mr. Moderator, I move the previous question.
Will you hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. It carries unanimously. Let us vote. This takes two-thirds to pass, it takes a two-thirds vote to pass. All in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion has carried. It has received more than a two-thirds vote. Thank you very much, Mr. McGee. I will take one more motion. Yes, sir, Mr. Rider. All, wait a minute. Point of order. Oh, very good. You know, excuse me. That was a very good point, thank you. In my haste to end this, we voted the previous question, but we failed to vote the article. Thank you. God, I hate to make mistakes this late in the evening. I thought I said it takes two-thirds to pass, and I did, I did take a second vote. We did take a second vote. I'm, you know, I can be fooled pretty easily by the town council when he tells me something. We did take a second vote, and it was more than a two-thirds vote, and I did announce it. We will now take a motion to adjourn, Mr. Rider has, to dissolve, Mr. Rider, yes, Mr. Rider.
Thank you. John Rider, 10 Isaac Davis Way, I move to dissolve the special town meeting.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of dissolving the special town meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. I know, I know, I know, I know. Thank you very much, Steve. Same to you. It was a lot of work.
Nice job.
Thank you.
I want to, I think nobody reads this, but if you want to, if you read this copy, I want to check it out.
Why? What's wrong with it? What does it say? I can't read it. Well, what that really means, it is okay grammatically, it just means that civility isn't an optional thing, it isn't an option. We don't get to choose it as an option. You think the word should be, you think the word should be optional? Well, it could, well, it could be, but I think it is correct grammatically, but you know, I'm not going to argue very hard about it. Quite, you know, quite frankly, thank you very much. What is that? I would agree with you, we're going to never use this again because we really didn't need this. It didn't work. Yeah, okay, fair enough, fair enough. No. Yeah. Well, thank you, Dory.